Okay, everybody, microphone is unmuted and we're live on Facebook.
Okay, all right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. So good to see all of you and all of you out there in KWC land that's tuning into Reverse Fold 100. So I'll be pivoting back and forth since we do have a live audience here. By the way, so good to see all of you. As we're starting to kind of get back to a level of normal and so good to see all of you. We are gonna have a great time today and the topic that we're gonna be discussing is the Reverse Fold 100. Now, this is a concept that is only about six months new for all of us here in the real estate world. And another benefit to being with KW is we share so much of what works and you are gonna be blown away today about how teams have been using the Reverse Fold 100 and creating massive success. Now, the thing we want to understand is COVID, a national pandemic, has probably changed the way we do business forever. And we need to embrace that because I think there's a lot of things you would look at and go, why me? Why did this happen? And yet, our industry, specifically Keller Williams, has pivoted massively. So again, when we look at the pandemic aspect of this thing, we may look back and say, one of the gifts that the pandemic gave us was the Reverse Fold 100. So many of you were using your databases to make care calls and finding that there was a tremendous amount of business in need in those care calls. And now we're gonna layer something like the Reverse Fold 100 on top of it. So, lots to talk about today. My name is Fritz Pollard. I'm a MAPS Executive Coach, living and working out of Austin and here visiting back and forth. And it's just a pleasure to be here and share some of these great tools. We are going to look at a lot of different material today. Much of this is video as this has been gaining traction. We have seen some of this even presented at MegaCamp. In fact, we're gonna actually open with a MegaCamp spot, just to give you a little bit more perspective on this. I'm gonna be bouncing around a little bit. We're gonna show you a lot of examples and then you're gonna break up after this event is done and get with your own market center and decide what we're gonna do with all this. So you're gonna get a lot of material, but it's only material until you put it into action, then it turns into production in dollars. So let's look at where this Reverse Fold 100 came about. I did a little talk on Wednesday at the team meeting and I said, really, radio stations mastered the art of making the phone ring. And they used to do it with giveaways and more often than not, because it was a radio station, they were giving away tickets. So let's say that you had Van Halen tickets. We use that example. Hundredth caller gets these front row tickets and then the phones would light up and there would be all this hoop-de-doo around it. And in radio stations, we're getting a lot of traction around this. We are gonna do the same thing, except we're having our clients call us and we're having a great time and providing a great giveaway as part of it. So the first video that we are gonna look at comes from MegaCamp. Now, I'm gonna just do a little plug for any of the KW events. For the time being, we are looking at digital events. There may be a time very soon where we will see events be partially live and partially digital. You cannot miss these events because had I not been in this class and you not taken MegaCamp, you wouldn't even seen the couple you're about to see. And when I share what they created around their giveaway, this could take care of a year's worth of your business. So we're gonna look at Ed and Julie Huck. This is a little over seven minutes. They borrowed this idea, they call it the playbook, from the next group that I'm going to share with you. And this group was the one I learned about some six months ago. So typical of KW, things start growing, they start evolving, they get improved, and they get more efficient. And I think what you're gonna see here shortly is you're gonna be the next person that's gonna improve what you see here. So let's take a look at Ed and Julie Huck. Now, what I want you to write down, both live here and out there and Facebook land, is some of the numbers that they generated. You will generate the same type of numbers if you do everything that we suggest today. So just understand, I want you to write these numbers down. I'm gonna go over them at the end. And then we're gonna build a game plan around how we make that work. These will be some of the things you'll be dealing with within your market centers. And I already talked to many about this. That guy is amazing with technology. So he's gonna be able to help all of us get this out to a bigger audience. So let's take a look at Ed and Julie Huck. Hi Julie and Ed, thanks for giving your time today to visit with us.
Hello.
So let's step right into this. Let's talk about events. Tell me what you're doing.
So, the people in Arizona that we modeled this after, and they were so kind to send us their playbook. We took that model and what we did was we created three prize packages and we made them really big prizes. And so we kind of timed it right around Father's Day, which the timing was pretty impeccable. And everybody was still pretty quarantined during this time, and I think it's gonna work in any time. And the prize packages were worth about $1,000 apiece. And what we did was we set them up in our office.
We had a backyard movie theater setup with a 12-foot screen, a nice projector. We bought chairs. Our marketing person, Kristin, who's amazing, she knows how to take every detail. She bought popcorn for the movie theater package and bowls for popcorn. I mean, everything. So this whole master package.
There's a Weber grill, you know, all Father's Day related.
Yeah, and a camping package. We had everything you can match, all ranging with the tents, the sleeping bags, the fire pit, the whole nine yards. She didn't miss a beat.
Okay, now this is not cheap.
If we didn't have sponsors, it would've still been way cheaper than our booby. It's one way we looked at it.
And so the idea of the event is that on this day, so it was a Friday, we picked a day and we marketed up until that day. And on that day, you had to call in a number between 8:00 and 4:00 PM and you had to register to win one of these prize packages. And we utilized, you know, so much social media. We did tons of videos. We had all of our agents doing videos. We did a lot of command ads, which were awesome. And so we were just really pumping it up. So the day of, we had about 15 people come in our office and we were all spaced out because we had to be safe. And anyways, so we had 15 people. The phone would just ring and it would ring on every single person's phone and you just pick it up. And you would answer the call and people were just calling. We expected to have breaks. From 8:00 till 5:00 PM, the phones didn't stop ringing and we talked to 589 people that day in one day.
Sounds like a telephone setup, right? You've got everybody.
It was so awesome.
We tried to, we shot live video that day of everybody, you know, on their phones, getting, watching the phones just kind of blowing up. Some more Facebook Live around that. We wish we could've done the whole.
Like risers?
Risers and all that.
Like telephones and we could've like videoed that.
That would've been fine. So tell me what the, let's back up for just a second. What is the, give me an example of an ad. Give me of a message that people were responding to.
Yeah, so the, some of the ads were, some of them were just a photo of what we were sent, of what one of the packages was. Every morning or every other morning, I would just walk in, I would grab my, our marketing person, I'd say, let's do a Facebook Live. And I would talk about, okay, here's our Weber grill package and it includes this and this and this and this, just 30 seconds. Not much, you know, not to really go too deep into it and then just let it kind of go viral on its own.
I'm curious, of the three packages, I heard a camping package, a home movie package, and a grill package. What was the one that everybody really wanted or were they all kind of even?
That's a great question. I think it was kind of even, you know?
And they didn't get to pick. They just, they didn't get to pick. They just had to register. Yeah.
And we did the whole thing, Facebook Live, again, to pull the contest winners. So we had some excitement around that too. I don't know how many people actually were on Facebook during that piece of it. But one of the highs I got was, I remember because I was taking calls too and probably 30 to 40 people that I had talked to that day. And so you're talking, some of these are past customers, some of these are just people that saw Facebook ads, some of these are friends of past customers that said, hey, you need to call, there's this great contest going on. And because I think the packages were so kind of cool, yeah, I had people, I was talking with one guy that I know makes $3,000 or $4,000 a year. They can easily buy this package on its own. And he's calling, you know, because of, hey, I can go get a free back there at the theater. I'm gonna go do it.
Yeah, yeah, I get that totally. So what happened? So you, tell us the phone call. So I call in, I go, hey, I'm calling in to register for, to win a prize. What did, what did your people say on the other end?
So we would say, oh, great, and we're so glad that you called. And in order to register you, we just have to have you answer a few questions. And so we had little forms that each person was filling out. And we said, okay, what's your name? What's your phone number? What's your email? What agent did you work with on our team? Did you work with our team before? And then we asked home address and then we asked birthday because that's the command field that we never had in our old database. Do you have any upcoming real estate needs? How did you hear about this then? Who do you know that needs to buy or sell or invest in real estate that we could call today? Then we even said, who do you know that might be thinking about a career in real estate that might want to talk to Ed or Julie? And, and then that one, actually, we had 39 people. So I had 39 leads of people who were thinking about a career in real estate.
I just had to hit pause right now because I don't know how many times you said it from the stage, Gary. It's leads is first, right? Then listings and leverage. You can do both at the same time. So I just love that you guys were going for leads for business and leads for leverage. That is awesome.
So we had 589 calls, 215 new contacts.
There you go.
And they're still, and they are still coming in. There were some more residual even afterwards because we kept promoting it after the event.
Just as congratulations to this winner, congratulations to that winner, both those kinds of, kind of got some leverage out of it. And then 39 recruiting leads.
We had 147 leads to the team, just mostly longer-term nurturers and then some shorter-term nurturers as well. And then the command ads generated 8,276 impressions and we had 68, ran another 68 new content from those impressions. And then the Facebook ads had about a 30,000-person reach, just because of all of the networks that the Facebook ads were going out to.
And we upped our Facebook likes by 110.
Yeah, so 110 people liked our team Facebook page because we said, in order to see the live drawing, to see if you won, go to our Facebook page and like us. So then they could tune in at 5:00 that day.
So then the only question I have left is, did you make any money?
Oh, 20, 30? You know, they'll probably do something in the next six to 12 months.
All right, guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, said better than I could say it. So let me just put these numbers into perspective. $3,000, about $1,000 each in each of these packages. They do a Friday, by the way, Friday has been the recommended day, 8:00 to 5:00, 9:00 to 4:00, whatever you want to choose to do. You have to have a full team of people and that will be completely indicative and tied to how well you promote it. The better you promote it, the more calls are gonna come in. You're gonna need some special tools, like a phone system called Ring Central. So you'll put one phone number out and it will roll over to the other team members. Yet, if you think about a $3,000 investment, they got sponsorship help, okay? And again, we're gonna always follow the rules and the laws of our local state and not violate anything on that, from that standpoint. And, and so maybe that didn't cost them 3,000 specifically, but at the end of the day, here are the numbers again. 589 calls in, they ended up getting 39 recruiting opportunities. So I think of, let's see, Shannon Jones, you're on Shannon Jones team. So some of our bigger teams are always looking for talent. We can use this program to find talent. They ended up getting 215 new contacts to put into command. So that's a, that's a business plan line item in and of itself, growing our database. We ended up getting 147 new leads. How long would that take? 8276 of command impressions, 68 new contacts from the command advertising, marketing. Facebook ads had a 30,000-person reach, 110 Facebook Live likes, and 20 to 30 leads in the next six to 12 months. Now, you look at those numbers and you go, I can't do that. I'm just a single agent. Why do you think we're doing this as a market center? Because as a market center, we can use that leverage. Now, maybe the Shannon Jones team says, we can do that on our own. But for the rest of us, we may say, let's pool our talents together, have some fun marketing and support each other. Put a checklist of marketing together that we all follow. And even if you got a fraction of this, this changes your year. Now, as part of your 36th touch, your 48th touch, or 96th touch, this is something that I've now got teams that I coach that are saying, we need to do this quarterly. I've actually got one team that says, we need to do this monthly because this is forcing us to have conversations with our database we wouldn't normally have or we're challenged to have because it just gets busy. And when you look at the whole care call scenario, when you look at the fact you call them, you get voicemail, you get hangups, you get nothing. They're now calling you and here's what the studies have shown. They are much more willing to have a good, long, and deep conversation when they're calling you than when you're calling them. So it's changing the landscape of how we communicate with our database. All right, so now what we need to do is look at some of the finer points of how we get one of these programs up and off the ground, okay? So one of the things that we look at is who do you need to leverage? Your market center, maybe you look at vendors, maybe you look at sponsorship, whatever you need to do to get this thing up and off the ground. Now, one of the things that we've heard, and we're gonna go much deeper into prizes, they need to be prizes that get people's attention, okay? You can't clean out your garage and say, geez, I've got this old sewing machine. I think I'm gonna put that out there and see what everyone thinks about it. These got to be gifts that have a little pizzazz to them. If you heard about what they talked about, how many people have a blow-up movie screen that you could put in your backyard? And yet, if you're giving away as a prize, someone may say, gosh, we don't know how long this pandemic's gonna go. We may be doing much more family stuff in our backyard. It kind of triggers people to call in and engage. We found that Fridays are more important, 9:00 to 4:00. Then you do the giveaway at 5:00. Okay, and I'm gonna show you a giveaway live that I've got a video of. Look at your allied partners. Agents rotate. You're gonna have to have a crew in here. Now, listen, if you're a single agent, maybe you bring, I don't know, your kids in or, you know, the in-laws in. Again, you may put your own phone number out there for a communal market center prize. So your phone will be ringing from your database. Ring Central, we gotta have some tools where the same phone number rolls over. I want to hold off on, on some of the scripting and so forth until we look at some of the marketing. Now, I'm gonna show you examples of what marketing has done, but here would be the beginning of the list. We're gonna use e-newsletters. Oh, there we go. Thank you. We're gonna use e-newsletters, slide dial. Again, we're gonna do all that legally. Slide dial to your farm areas or your database, social media posts, text messages. There's text messaging tools and systems out there. Again, we're gonna follow all the do not call rules and laws. Facebook Live, we're gonna post to Facebook. We may do our drawing and our giveaway on Facebook Live, just like we're doing this program today. So again, a lot of the, the success of these is built in the preparation. So the first thing I'd like to do, Patricia, if you could click on the example up there, create a graphic, and I think we've got some of those open. And we're gonna just go right down the line. Now, this one you're gonna see is, I think it's Mary Cheatham King. We've got this all set up so we can click through them quickly. And if we have to open it again, you can do that. Yeah, let's just click that first one there. Okay, so this would be an example of a text message and you're gonna see that there's a lot of similarities. So you're gonna be able to like use the same material in a lot of different formats. You see it there?
Yeah.
Okay, so and then just roll that down a little bit. Okay, so go the other way. So this is an actual text. Now, what Mary Cheatham King did, and this is a great agent out of North Carolina. And I actually had her on a panel at Family Reunion, just an amazing agent. You're gonna see some of the videos she does, but they did a staycation. So they put this in a text. They have the, where the hotel is and a little bit of write-up and some of the stuff that you can find on, on Facebook. So this would be one of the mediums that you're gonna use. Okay, so let's go to the next one and then you're gonna see the video that she did to promote this. And it's the first one under boost these inside the post. Now, you're gonna hear a lot about video and then you can blow this up big. So this is Mary Cheatham King. Listen to how she does this and you can use this over and over again.
Hey, everybody, it's Mary Cheatham with Mary Cheatham King Real Estate and Keller Williams. And our team just had the opportunity to visit the New Bedford Hotel and their restaurant 34 degrees north. We had just a fantastic meal and loved checking out the hotel. So we decided that we're gonna do a giveaway. All you have to do to enter is call us next Thursday between 9:00 and 4:00 at our phone number, which is 252-518-5222, and we'll get you registered. What you get is a one-night staycation for two at the hotel plus a $100 gift card at 34 degrees north that you can use for breakfast or dinner or drinks, anything you want. So all you're gonna do is call us next Thursday, 252-518-5222. We look forward to speaking with you then. Thanks so much.
Now, what you can do with that is you can embed that in a text, you can embed that in an email, you send it out in multiple ways. If you remember what the first presentation talked about is just doing these quick videos about the package, just constant reminding and reminding. Okay, so let's go ahead and take a look at the email.
Hey, everybody, it's Mary Cheatham, Mary Cheatham King Real Estate and Keller Williams. And I'm here with Tammy Thomas. And Tammy is somebody that I've wanted to meet for a long time. She's somebody that we have interacted with and made donations to in the past, but I've never actually had the chance to sit down and talk to Tammy. So what Tammy is doing is really pretty incredible. Tammy is right here in Morehead City and she has an organization that's called Miriam. What the Miriam does is it works with women who are struggling to overcome drug and alcohol addictions. These women actually come and live together and they learn together and they put their lives back together with the help of Tammy and a staff that she has put together. It's really pretty unbelievable. And one of the things that I've learned today is that one of the issues that Tammy has is that it costs about $700 a month for a woman to come through this program and to live here, which is really incredibly reasonable. And Tammy was telling us that she's actually had to turn down some folks and that's an ongoing problem because there aren't enough sponsorship.
Now, one of the things you're seeing is that this is the style with which Mary Cheatham King markets. She does a lot of spotlight videos on local businesses and, you know, there's nothing better than say, you know, Long Beach and, and all the businesses around or, you know, philanthropy-based things you can document. And, and this is part of her way of communicating. So when she does her giveaway, it's just the way that people are used to having Mary Cheatham King interact with them. So let's go ahead now, look at the email version of the communication. So that'd be on the far right. You could open up the, that email and then go down to the email, click here for an example. Now, you're gonna see a very similar theme in the way that Mary Cheatham actually interacts. Remember, you gotta do the control. There we go. Okay, so here it is in an email. Notice it's the same print or the same card. Now she embeds the video and now it's, it's, it's just a continuous sending out of this. There's other things, you know, again, this looks like some kind of a newsletter. And I guess the point I want to make here is we're not having to duplicate a lot of our work. What I'm actually suggesting to many is that you guys go through and maybe create a 12-point checklist of all the ways that you could communicate, use some of the tools and support that we have in the market centers, and then just totally rip off and duplicate what you're seeing here. And then once you create it, it just goes out all the time. Could go out to your farm areas, it could go out to your database, it could go out to past clients. You know, you could, you know, you're holding an open house or whatever version or format that looks like and sign people up and, and, and say, hey, listen, if you want to get into our drawing, fill out our registration form. There's just a lot of ways that we can use and promote this. There was another email, Patricia, there, second on that list, that is just a different version. And these are actually for two sports tickets. Maybe it's two, maybe it's four. So you go back to the email there. No, it's, it's back in the email with all the links. Unfortunately, this, all this is in email format and we're just using that, okay, over the left, right there. Okay, and then second email down. Do that control. There we go. So again, this is for Minnesota Vikings versus Chicago Bears, you know, local sporting events. Now granted, this is before the pandemic and, you know, that's a pretty big game for that area of the, of the country. And so that could be a card that could get texts. There could be videos tied to it. So I really want to make the point that when you create your marketing, you're not duplicating a lot of things. You're just putting it out there in a, in a different forum and, and in a different format, okay? All right, let's go now to, let's, let's pass on the script for just a minute. All right, let's go now to, let's pass on the script for just a minute. Let's go to the actual giveaway. And we had opened that. Is it the? Yeah, this is it. Okay, so before we hit go on this. So this is going to give you kind of a format of how this happens. So in this training room, you are going to find that their team is in this room. Now, they also have all of the prizes in the room. Now, you can tell they're all a little casual because they've likely been in there all day long. This team ended up doing like 289 actual calls in. And I've got their numbers here, so I'll share those with you as soon as we look at them. This is Jesse Heifel, wherever he went. Now, you can't really hear this this well, but I want you to get a feel for the energy around the giveaway. You can just hit go as soon as it comes back up again. Now, it isn't, this is a separate video. Now, one of the things that you can see here is you'll see all the computers around in the room. They've got a bag with all the contestants in there. They even have a cooler. So see if you can hit go on that. Dan Quickup. Notice the setup. That's the war room. They're calling 400-something calls from there. So that's an example of the big screen. Now, what they're going to do on the TV is like a random name thing. I have a feeling this is like a staycation or something like that. So this must have been all the contest entries. Okay, so this group now I have here is 272 incoming phone calls. He talked about 400-something. 81 callers had real estate needs. 13 were brand-new leads with real estate needs in the next one to 12 months, and 41 new lead referrals. So whatever they label things, it was a pretty successful day. Now, I have a group that just did this. Beth and Steve Ryder out of Phoenix. They ended up getting 64 call-ins. They did something a little different. They actually had entries for doing reviews, so they ended up getting five reviews written. They got five app downloads, and they got eight new leads. And they actually did get a call-in listing lead, which, you know, that may have come in anyway. But at the end of the day, they're looking at doing this every month because Beth Ryder was actually taking the phone calls. They just busted 1,000 closed and pending units for the year, and she doesn't have time to necessarily sit down and get those outbound calls made. So the fact that they had one day where 64 conversations were had, she sees that as a value to do a giveaway each month. So you can see where the traction is around these things. And the reality is, it just takes a little bit of planning and communicating with the database. Then you have the giveaway like this, and everyone's watching on Facebook Live. I see the same thing happening in a market center where we may take an environment like this. Everybody's doing their Facebook Live, but it's the whole community's database. We don't know who's going to win. They don't either. And this could actually create a little tie-in that, oh my gosh, what is that agent doing? They've got such a great team. They've got such a great environment. It's just being involved in the energy around that thing that could be actually very powerful for you in being connected with the size of this thing, even though you were just a small part of the overall success. So that's what the reverse bold 100 is all about. So let's talk about prizes, and then we're going to look at a script. Yeti coolers, Ring doorbells, Nest thermostats, Alexa or Google home stations, Samsung Smart Home. Someone actually put in here free carpet cleaning, window washing, a day at the spa, grills, like those green eggs that we see. I'd seen a team that had done those. Now, here's the funny thing. The team that I saw do the presentation on this said, do not have the green egg delivered to your house. Because if you've ever seen those things, I guess they're between $800 and $1,000, and they also weigh hundreds of pounds. So she said, we have the green egg delivered to our house, and then we had a little old lady with it, drives over, and next thing you know, now we had to get the green egg from our house to her house. So they said on those big products, just have it delivered to their house so you don't have to mess with it. But we learned this, right? You learn it as you do more of it. Apple Watch, Father's Day, home events, like we saw the movie theater, the camping packages. Anything that we could do outside kind of ties in with the whole national pandemic scenario and tends to create a lot of great giveaway energy. Now, the thing that we want to remember here, it needs to be something that gets people's attention. And when you get the right package or the right giveaway, the phones are going to light up. If you market it right, the same thing is going to happen. Okay? Now, Patricia, if you could, let's look at the script. So there's the call-in piece of this, and then they talked about filling out the little form. One of the things you're all going to have to agree on is what is going to be the method around how many entries people get. Okay, so we're going to show you the script. So the form likely has to have an entry for someone that calls, an entry if you provide a lead. Obviously, we don't want to underscore or miss that opportunity. Maybe there's an entry if they help you complete, you know, their file within your command screen or command world, like you heard now that birthdays is part of the command world. Maybe they get an entry if they sit down and help you complete your CRM input. Maybe there's a download for, or an entry for someone that downloads your app. And maybe there's an entry if they write a review. You're going to have to agree, though, if you do this as a full market center, that everyone understands how you get entries if there's going to be more than one. Then we need to understand what other things we're looking for. So let's look at the script right here. So this was the Davis team. Okay, so let's see. Who do I have the pleasure of speaking with? Thank you for calling in today. We get their name. How did you hear about the giveaway? That might actually help you fine-tune your marketing in the future. If you win, what is the best email to notify you and your phone number? One last thing, we are doing also an exclusive giveaway, $50 gift card that we'd love to get to you. Who do you know from work or church that can help, that we can help buy a home, sell a home, or invest? Then you can also add in there, as we heard, who do you know that may be thinking about getting into the business? I would actually get a form with checkboxes so you could fill it out. You could update your own database, and then of course, you're going to put it in the drawing. The drawing that we just saw, the giveaway or the call-in ended at four, and then it was Facebook Live at five. Kind of gives you a chance to kind of get everything put together. You're definitely going to need spreadsheets and computer systems to upload and update any data for your own individual database. And then, of course, something would have to go into a drawing for the actual giveaway portion. One other thing, though, that I want to mention around this. Some of the teams have found that people like to go to a landing page or go to your website to register. So you want to have the same questions on the landing page. Who do you know that wants to buy, sell, or invest? Who do you know that's thinking about getting into the business? And we can use websites effectively, too. The only thing you got to make sure you're ready to do is transition that into the giveaway. So again, some of the other things that we're learning as we go. And at the end of the day, what this ultimately becomes is how well you market it. And again, picking great prizes that people want to win, and then the rest takes care of itself. So maybe what I'll do just for the sake of discussion is open it up for questions for this group. And then what I'm going to challenge all of you to do while you're maybe thinking of what your question is, is you got to pick the date. You got to pick the prize. And we could potentially do that between Calabasas and Long Beach and some of the other market centers that may want to participate. I think we need to get your 10, 12, 15-point marketing plan together so all of you can start executing on that. And then with a date and a time and a prize picked, you start the marketing, and we're off to the races. The shortest timeframe that I have heard that still got great results was 10 days out. The preferred is three weeks. So if you start doing the math on this, you know, what is today? We're at the ninth, so three weeks from now, you're getting to the end of the month. And when, or we're early November, so that may impact what the prize is. Remember, the Hucks were doing a Father's Day giveaway. So again, there's a little bit of seasonality here as to what you may pick for the prize. You want to make sure that we weave in and out of holidays, but that you also give yourself enough time to get the marketing out there. So do we have any questions from our live studio audience? Self-explanatory? I don't know. Patricia, can we get questions from?
Yeah, I'm looking at Facebook to see if we have questions on Facebook.
And based on that, then it's just planning. Yes, sir.
So Chris, just tell some details about how the prize, you have one prize? In regards to the simulations?
Yeah.
We're all in the room, you have one prize?
Yeah, I would decide on one prize, and everybody goes in on it. And then everyone is responsible for their own marketing to their own database. That's how you leverage this thing. So like, for instance, Beth and Steve Ryder did the Traeger barbecue, and they ended up getting 64 people call in, and what did I say? Eight leads. So let's say that in the next six months, they convert two of those. I mean, this pays for itself multiple times over. And the value was the 64 conversations that Beth had in that day. It was her and her assistant. And by the way, they do so much business that when people got Beth on the phone, that was like, oh my God, Beth, you're answering the phones. And then they had a great chat after that. So I think you go for one prizes. Now, if we get 50 of you and you all throw in whatever, maybe you can do, you know, two or three prizes, and then get sponsorship on top of it, it's the best money you've ever spent. And you don't care who wins. You do kind of. But the secret is in the prize that generates your clients to call you. That's where you win. Hey, great question. Yes, sir. Well, the Ryder's got a call-in listing. Now, that probably would have come in, but it was interesting, the timing of it all, because they were doing so much marketing. Just so you know, one of the teams that I've heard of did like a launch the day of. So they did a video that said four hours and counting. Then they did one two hours, and then they did one in 15 minutes. When you're touching your client base that often, you will get now business for sure. And yet, some of this stuff is the nurture business that would have maybe gone your way or not gone your way had you not been promoting it as often and as effectively in all these different mediums. So absolutely. Do I have a number? No. Yes?
You have a question?
No, I think it was asked already.
Okay.
Keith Cos.
Number of us that went together. I do have a question, actually. If there was a group of us that were going together, would it be one phone number or would it be several phone numbers?
It would be your own phone number marketed to your group, and you had a ring central scenario. So Jesse Herfle's team, if I was to look at that, I'm going to say is maybe six or eight, and then they probably had others in there. Now, he said they got 450 actual calls. Some of those I'm finding went to websites, and so it's interesting how we're counting that. But you know, if you look at 400 or 589, that was the Hucks. I'm going to probably estimate they had 10 or 12 people handling phone calls. But because they were the team doing it, they had the one-ring central number, and then it was just rolling over, and everybody's phone was ringing. The first one picks it up, gets it. So let's say you had, and I'm just thinking outside the box here. Let's say you got 5,000 people in your database, and you hit the heck out of this thing. And you say, you know what? I got to be ready. I might bring in my kids. I might bring in relatives to help answer the phone. We're going to make it a fun scenario, and we just kind of figure it out. But you're going to be promoting your own number. It's the same prize, though, that the whole market center is giving away. But the secret sauce is how you individually market it. And I think it brings the cost down, and it maybe makes it something that you could at least do once a quarter, maybe every other month. Okay, any questions coming in on Facebook?
Yes, so Keith Cos wants some confirmation here. If you go in as an individual agent, how do you split up the leads or commission? Just curious.
So again, that's a great question. To clarify, you are going to be marketing this to your own database leaning on the market center price. So let's say for the sake of discussion, Keith, I've got 5,000 people in my database, and you have 3,000. You're going to have your own phone number that you're marketing to your 3,000. I'm going to have my own phone number that I'm marketing to my 5,000. The day of the event, let's say I did a horrible job, and I get 20 call-ins. Those are coming right to me. You did a great job, and you got 50 call-ins. Those are going to you. Mine are coming to me. But it's the same prize that we all agreed on and chipped in on at the market center level. Ask him if that answered the question.
He says he understands now. Thank you.
And would you please tell Keith next time you should be here live? There's no excuse. Because I've seen him in here all week. And remind him to bring his mask. He seems to forget sometimes.
You heard that, Keith.
Okay, what else? These are all great questions. Now, the younger you are, the more you understand how you reach out and text the biggest world in the most unique way. You know, the videos, the texts, the Facebook Live, all those things that we've learned to do a lot better through the pandemic now is our best friend and how to touch a community and create a little fun around it. And then, boy, when they come in and pick up the prize, another opportunity. If that's your client that wins it, you're doing a big hoop-de-doo over that. And then maybe you pick the date for the next one, and we just go again and again and again. And if you struggle to call your database, when they start calling you, and if that was just once a quarter or once every 60 days, imagine how that can change your business, especially when we sometimes have fear of the following. Okay, question back here?
Would you recommend that we do this before the end of the year?
Oh, yeah. I mean, there's no reason to wait. Because this is your 2021 business. Now, you look at the big packages, small packages, doesn't matter. The ratio was about this, and I did the numbers here. I had one team that 20% of their, they had a 20% return on activity. One was 25%. When you looked at actual call-ins to lead. One was 25% when you looked at actual call-ins to leads. So if you just think about that, how many calls do you make outbound inbound and get a quarter of them that creates a lead? Now what the prize does is it incentivizes, maybe you would say that there's three entries. You get one for calling in, you give me a referral, I'm going to put your name in three times. You download my app, I'm going to put your name in again. You give me a review, your name goes in again. So and then you allow me to update your file, it goes in again. So one call-in could actually get five entries as long as the whole office agrees that that's going to be the game plan. And I would just put that on my call-in sheet. And then you just make sure that, you know, depending on how many things that client would do in complying with the giveaways, that we would put their name in five times or what have you. But again, 25% return, 20% return and I think my lowest was like a 14% return. There's no reason to wait. So you know, think about what's going on in the world. How many times, maybe it's a date night staycation getaway like Mary Cheetham King did. Well, are you kidding me with COVID? How often are people getting away? So would that be the trigger to do it now? My folks in Phoenix said, are you kidding me? We don't spend time outside when it's 115 degrees. It's just getting to our outdoor weather. So they're looking at the movie package and the barbecue package. Because that's now just getting to be their time. Yes? Well, leave it to you to think a little bit bigger than the rest of the world.
Just some thinking, you know?
Yeah, yeah. Listen, I may even call in on that. I'll do whatever you want. So here's the thing, is you have to do the first one and then you learn. Now I don't know for sure, but Jesse Herfle, I've had that, that's the one where they're in the conference room. I've had that video for probably five or six months. The Hucks, I think, because when the Herfles did that, they pushed out everything that they did. This is why you got to love KW. You don't have to figure this out. Someone's gone before you and because it's such a sharing community, the Hucks ended up doing it more productively than the Herfles did. So guess what? We've got the same learning curve. So you could take Calabasas, maybe you pull it, maybe you do it by market center. You do one and you go, okay, let's sit down and see what worked. So that when we can invest the learnings into the next one. And maybe next year at this time, we're doing a car. I don't know. It's, the reality is, is I want to start looking at, like Gary asked, how much business are you going to do? They said 20 to 30 transactions they feel are in the next 12 months. So you do the math. I mean, the thing we got on our side is a higher average commission than most. So anything is possible if you all decide is possible. Okay, any more questions from Facebook?
Uh, no.
Okay? All right, so listen, that is the reverse fold 100. You now have the information. You've seen videos, you've seen texts, you've seen the tools that are required. We've given you a list of the prizes. You've seen the different ways in which it's done in the giveaways. The staycation probably is just to, hey, you won. Herfle does this big old thing with scooters and rolling things on TVs. You get to decide what it looks like. Now the key is, and this is where a lot of these things break down, who's going to take action on it? So probably someone in each market center has to be the designated organizer. And now we just start planning. We need a date, we need a prize and we need a committed group of people that are going to run with it. And you start those three things and now we have momentum. So again, my name is Chris Pollard. Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure. Now go implement. I can't wait to hear the feedback. Maybe the next time we're together, we're reviewing the numbers, picking the next date and prize and saying what we're going to tweak. That would be really cool if that's the next time we're all together. So have a great Friday, everyone. Be safe and we'll see you next time.